We'll do a quick review of last week and then dive into this week. So, last week, we talked about Nehemiah was doing a great job building the wall. They made great progress, you know, had a little bit of complaining, but had a lot of opposition, you know, some of the neighbors weren't happy, driving down the property values, etc., etc. But no, Sam Belat and Tobias, yes, thank you. And then we meet their buddy who makes the third of the Three Stooges, Gesham, this week. So, they were trying to do everything they could to slow down the progress. And with the idea, I'm sure that with a little bit of opposition, they probably just quit. So, you know, they were thwarted, Nehemiah was prepared. And, you know, quite frankly, Nehemiah just kind of ignored them a few times, which was kind of the thing to do. You know, we talked about also last week that, you know, Nehemiah's true call was to, not just to rebuild the wall, but he was called to rebuild a community. You know, the wall was the project that was going to bring the community together. So, you know, we talked last week about the economic reforms he instituted with the usury laws, the unfair usury laws that were, quite frankly, you know, unlawful under the Mosaic, the Deuteronomy law. So, you know, I think that was, probably went a long way to build a lot of trust with people in the community, as well as, what were some of the other things he did to build community? While we're on that topic, what were some of those things? Do you remember what we talked about?
Well, I mean, to have all the stuff in chapter five valid. You know, he had some of them people taking advantage of others that, you know, charging interest and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Did away with that. I think that built a little good community.
You know, and he led by example in terms of, you know, food rationing and food sharing. He did not use his position to host a lavish banquet for his leadership team. You know, they pretty much, you know, he gave all his food out to the people, to his people. So, you know, he was a sacrificial, he employed sacrificial leadership, which was, you know, important to build trust. So, you know, and think about this, in the end of chapter five, you know, we're a month and a half into this project. I mean, he's moving fast, they're getting the wall going, it's, things are happening quickly. So, I wanted to start today's lesson and dive into a couple of, you know, a couple of things to help us, again, as we are in the midst of a, it was my mind, I apologize, you know, a little more in-depth study of scripture, where we look at context and things. I wanted to kind of take a look at the timeline of where we are in the Old Testament. Going back up to the beginning of it, you know, the Babylonians invaded the Judean region and conquered the Assyrians in 612, and then slowly took over the rest of the region in Jerusalem and started deporting the Jews in about 605. So, that's kind of when the deportations started. It started, you know, that first diaspora group living in Babylon. 586, when the Jerusalem walls were actually destroyed. So, you know, 20 years, 20-ish years later, walls were destroyed. And then about 50 years after that, Cyrus the Persian conquers Babylon, and he reverses the exile and starts offering to return Jews to Judea. And many take him up on it. Many don't, but many do. So, in 539, people start returning to Judea and Jerusalem, the area around Jerusalem. 516, the temple is rebuilt. Off the top of my head, Zechariah and Ezekiel, maybe, were leading that. So, you know, they had the priorities in place. They wanted, they were going to rebuild the temple. Now, that's about as good as it got for a long time. The temple was there, but they really, you know, they hadn't really gotten back into true temple worship and obedience to the law. So, in 458, you know, 75-ish years later, Ezra returns from Babylon to reinstate the law. So, with the people that are there, you know, he's working to reinstate temple law, you know, the mosaic law. And then 13 years later, it's when Nehemiah shows up to build, rebuild his wall. So, this first part, the first two, from 605 to 539, is the Babylonian period of the exile. And then in 539, you know, we enter the Persian period, which lasts for about 200 years until about 330, when the area begins the Greek period. So, we won't go into that at this point. So, that gives us some context of the timeline of where we are. I wanted to share, this is, I've got an archaeological Bible, and it has some cool things in it from time to time and a lot of contextual information. So, I kind of wanted to read a little bit about this post-exile, this Persian period. It says, and this is kind of in reference to the background for Nehemiah, chapter seven, says, "The post-exilic period, which covers over 500 years, can be conveniently divided into five periods: Persian, Greek, Hasmonean, Roman, and Herodian. In 539, 538 B.C., Cyrus the Persian defeated the Babylonians and reversed the policy of depopulating areas and scattering people into foreign lands. Almost immediately thereafter, he allowed the exiled Israelites to return to their homeland under the leadership of Shesbazar," which we read more about him in Ezra. "The Cyrus Cylinder provides important extra-biblical confirmation." So, that was a document that they found called the Cyrus Cylinder that talks about that. "Many Jews opted to remain in the lands to which they'd been exiled, though maintaining their religious and ethnic identity. This phenomenon, known as dispersion of the Jews, had become an irreversible social reality. However, the Old Testament exilic and post-exilic narratives, with the exception of the Book of Esther, focuses on the challenges and crises facing the returnees. The first major challenge was the rebuilding of the temple in the face of external opposition and internal neglect. Its restoration was a prerequisite for the reinstatement of God's presence and blessings, and a strong priesthood was necessary to reinstitute local worship according to prescribed norms, stirred into action by the prophets Haggai and Zechariah." Sorry, Haggai, not Ezekiel. "With Persian, and with Persian sponsorship, the Persian-appointed governor Zerobabel and the high priest Joshua successfully completed the project dedicating the temple in about 516, 515 B.C. Another challenge was the threat of assimilation and idolatry. With Persian endorsement, Ezra returned to Jerusalem in 458 B.C. He confronted the people, led them in confession of their unfaithfulness to God, and later fulfilled his commission to teach the Book of the Law of Moses to the people, which we'll talk about next week in Nehemiah. A third significant challenge was the fortification of Jerusalem. In 445, Nehemiah, royal cupbearer to the Persian monarch, appealed to Artaxerxes I on Jerusalem's behalf. Artaxerxes appointed Nehemiah governor of Judea, funded his return to Jerusalem, and provided building materials. Despite considerable opposition, Nehemiah and the returnees succeeded in their mission. The dedication of the wall was accompanied by extensive reading from the law and a call for covenant renewal. This period of revival was apparently short-lived, however. When Nehemiah returned to Jerusalem, perhaps in 433, 432-ish, he discovered that the priests and people alike had become negligent in their worship. Persian kings' endorsement and support of religious activities in Judea is consistent with their interest in temple communities in Babylon, Syria, Asia Minor, Armenia, Phoenicia, and elsewhere." So, it goes on, talk a little bit more about that, some of those areas. So, again, that kind of falls in line a little bit with the timeline and, you know, that continuing narrative of the Israelites in the Old Testament, where they are enslaved by Egyptians or enslaved by sin, have a comeback, it's all great, and then they fall back, and then there's comeback, and then, you know, so it's that, it's that roller coaster ride that, you know, anybody that's been through disciple Bible study, you know, we've been through that. So, thoughts, comments, questions on anything up to this point about the last two weeks, or anything you've come across that you want to share?
One of the things that I know was Nehemiah and Ezra, they split the leadership so that they probably both had a following or whatever, and so Nehemiah said, "Well, I'm here." And he sort of shared it with, where one would build the wall and the other would build the faith and get the law back in and do all of that. So, they shared, so that, I'm sure some of the people liked one and some liked the other, but since they were working together, it made a larger group.
Were they together, or were they about a generation apart?
No, they were, they were a crossover. As a matter of fact, we will talk about Ezra next week as part of this. Ezra returned to Jerusalem about 13 years earlier than Nehemiah.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood.
And there's no indication that they had any contact, at least that I have come across, that they had any relationship when they were in Babylon. But I don't know. So, the Book of Ezra is confusing because it does, it's got some wide timeframes and gaps in the Book of it. So, parts of the Book of Ezra are a generation apart from this timeframe.
I think what threw me was, I was looking at, when the temple was rebuilt, that Ezra was not part of that project. He was, okay, that's what threw me.
Yeah, and that's what makes Ezra confusing, because it talks about the temple rebuilding. But this was predated. But yeah, as a matter of fact, I think the last, the last sentence of chapter seven, no, it didn't, nevermind. It just, it was on my digital version, it bled over. So, yes, we'll talk about Ezra next week, that relationship. Larry, thanks for the foreshadowing. You were foreshadowing next week.
I'm always there.
I wouldn't say that, but we're just, you know, we're just going to run with it.
I kind of looked for the mic and I said, "I can't pick a chapter if I don't know." Like, God, I'm the sheep that showed them, so I looked ahead a little bit and I said, "This don't sound right."
You know, and actually, it may be something, we might look at doing Ezra next as a study. I don't know. We can look and see. You don't necessarily have to study them together, but it could be interesting. So, let's dive into chapter six, which I entitled, "Watch Your Back." So, you know, the neighbors are up in arms again. And now, they're getting a little more serious and a little more devious. And they're really trying to lure Nehemiah. You know, obviously, he's created a pretty nice safety net around himself and his people. So, they're trying to lure him out, you know, "Come out and meet with us, you know, let's hash this out and, you know, come to a conclusion, you know, make a nice agreement." And, you know, Nehemiah was having none of that. And then they tried to, I'm trying to think, you know, to shame him into meeting them in the temple or appeal to his religious sensibility. Yeah, exactly. So, why did, I mean, why were they so, why did they crank it up? I mean, obviously, the wall's going up, there's not going to be much they can do about it at that point. The wall was going to get finished. What were they so afraid of? I mean, there was no army. Nehemiah didn't have an army. There was, you know, he ended up, had a lot of people building this wall, but...
You know, at the beginning, back in like chapter three and four, they were kind of making fun of him, you know, you know, "What are you going to do with a bunch of old rubble like that?" And now they see it, you know, coming together. And it's, you know, it was pretty close to being finished, except for the door being hung and stuff. So, and I would think they'd probably get a little nervous that this may get serious pretty soon.
Yeah.
I think they're, I think they realized God's been helping him, though. He has some power up and over and above, and afraid he's going to be king.
Yeah.
Set himself up as a king.
If they can cause him to doubt himself or discredit him with people somehow.
Yeah, that's...
If they could pull him away or discredit him, then, you know, they'll use, they would use that as an example for everybody else, that, you know, he was a fluke or, you know, not a good leader.
What do you think about this idea that they were, that they understood that God was at work in this and that they were, that they feared, you know, that God was protecting Nehemiah? And, you know, how, what would cause that? How would they have any frame of reference to fear God? I guess is my question.
I don't even know if they realized it was God, per se, our God, Nehemiah's God, a power. From their perspective, they realized he relied on his God, and they may have been afraid that there was more to it than they thought. It was moving so quickly, and he seemed to overcome obstacles.
It was like a bunch of rubble, right? Basically, a bunch of rubble, and then basically in 52 days.
It's like a cartoon. It's just so bad.
Yeah, I mean, think about it, it lay in ruins from 586 to 445. So, that's what, 140 years, 155 and 86?
141 years.
So, I mean, it lay in ruins for 100, almost 100, a century and a half, and in less than 60 days, they've got the wall raised back up to a respectable, original height, I don't know, whatever, but a respectable, fortifiable height.
Well, looking at Wayne's pictures, the block blocks or boulders or whatever were, I'm assuming just heaps. They weren't the best of tools to use to build a wall, I don't think, so...
Was this prophesied before it happened? Or did he just kind of come out of left field and say, "Let's go build a wall?"
Yes, and not really, you can literally come out of left field, but yes, Ezekiel, I'm trying to think some of the prophets that were in the exile.
Just trying to think.
Ezekiel, a lot, was Elijah? Anyway, yes, it was prophesied that they would return and that Jerusalem would be rebuilt.
So, I would assume these guys had heard that kind of thing over here. Probably wanted to prevent that kind of thing from happening.
You know, like we talked about, the Moabites, which was Tobias, I think, and the Ammonites and the Samaritans, you know, they all had history with the Jews in this region, that went way back, I mean, to, way back to Moses in the stories from Deuteronomy. So, you know, they had the stories in their tradition of the children of Israel and their God, and the things that their God, you know, get to their people. So, I think they had that, whether they understood it or not. I think Chris is on to something there, you know. But I think there was a true, a true fear, because, again, they had a shared tradition in that region that went way back.
Do we know, were they pagans, or they weren't a Jewish sect of some kind, right?
No, I mean, the Samaritans were the closest, you know, they were formerly Jews, but, yeah, the Ammonites and the Moabites were Baal worshippers, basically. Yeah. The Moabites, for sure, were Baal worshippers.
And so, we have, just help me understand, so we have Jerusalem, we have the wall, which was once a mighty kingdom and now it's coming back. And then you have these tribes, two or three or multiple tribes around that had coalesced with a, you know, an alliance to try to interfere with the rising back-up of Jerusalem.
Yeah, and you also had, you know, Jewish families and settlements that were outside of Jerusalem as well. So, yeah, that's, that's pretty much the situation. And, yeah, I think they feared that God would make Nehemiah the king. And, you know, their life was about to, you know, they were about to go to war, they were about to relive some of this, some of the history.
I have a question about the part where they were afraid that Nehemiah would become king. It's in chapter seven, verse 11, I guess, or no, it's six, verse 11, where they're talking about, that he'd been hired to intimidate me so that I would commit a sin by doing this, and then they'd be able to give him a bad time, whatever. So, the sin would be to set himself up as king?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which...
But there were kings, so...
And it was also more of a political ploy to, to set him up that Nehemiah was going to create a kingdom to separate from Artaxerxes and rebel.
And this was, I think, part of the episode where they were trying to lure him into the temple. And I think that would have been the sin. He's not a priest, so he wouldn't have been allowed into the temple.
I didn't understand what the sin was.
Yeah, I think.
He would have lost his authority.
Yeah, he would have been seen as an unclean, as not a priest. So, he's unclean, so he can't really go in the temple. And if he does, he's going to be seen as a coward and unclean.
I understand that part, but okay. He can't, he just can't go in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, they wanted to discredit him with the people, exactly what Rob said. And then also create an illusion for Artaxerxes that, hey, you're about to have a rebellion on your side. Send us some help and we'll help put this down, which, you know...
Mark, do you think, like, what was, what was influencing the opposition? I mean, was it mostly about power and money?
A different power.
Because the governors, they had the ability to tax, right?
Yeah.
And they sort of had control of the people around Jerusalem, along with the walls were down, right?
I think pretty much, I don't know what the economic...
The walls go up, they have, sort of lose control. The wall's down, they have more control over them.
Yeah, I don't know what kind of economic arrangements they had throughout the region, but definitely in their areas, I mean...
I mean, there had to be a reason why they didn't want it to go up.
Yeah.
Allah's power.
Yeah, I think it's just that simple. Yeah, you've got these outlying tribes, and they're all rivals with each other, I'm assuming. And Jerusalem was once a mighty kingdom, now it's becoming a mighty kingdom again. And they're going to, could end up ruling over the whole Judean territory like they did before. They didn't want that, you know, because I don't, they're going to become our overlords. We're going to become their, you know, their serfs. And I think that's what it was all about.
Yeah. So, let's, let's, again, part of what our job with this is to translate this part of the story into, you know, what kind of opposition do we face in our faith life, in our lives? And then how did, how did Nehemiah kind of remain steadfast? Kind of what was his, what was his formula for remaining steadfast? And what can we take from that? So, let's, let's start with the opposition. I mean, obviously, you know, I don't, I'm not afraid of my neighbor in the cul-de-sac, you know, starting a war with me over our backyard fence. So, what kind of, you know, what kind of opposition do we face in our faith life? It's kind of real and tangible like this.
Well, there's this thing called the internet. It's pretty distracting.
There's all kinds, I mean, stumbling blocks everywhere. And then every time, you know, you get distracted by one of the stumbling blocks, it's sort of like drop the stake between you and God, you know, it sort of separates you instead of bringing you closer.
Yeah, that's, I like that thought, you know, because one of the things I thought of was, you know, the people that, for example, if you had a particular calling or to do something in your life, and the people around you weren't supportive and didn't understand it, and didn't, you know, understand where it came from, you know, how they can be opposing you, not forcibly, but just by not supporting you, that kind of a, that passive-aggressive, I guess, opposition.
I think, I mean, anytime you want to disassociate from something that the world values and holds up, you know, as success, a measure of success or whatever, I mean, I think people can be well-intentioned, thinking, "We're helping you course correct. You're doing something that's impractical," you know, whatever.
Yes.
And it's really counter to what God is wanting, you know, but they view it as you're being destructive or whatever, and you're making these bad, wrong decisions. And so, I think that's definitely one way I see opposition.
So, how did, how did Nehemiah kind of stay steadfast and on point and on task and kind of fight through this opposition?
By making himself an example, to start with.
All right, so, he continued to lead by example, continued...
Chapter six, verse nine, "They were all trying to frighten us, thinking their hands will get too weak for this work, and it will not be completed. But I pray, now strengthen my hands."
So, he prayed.
Well, he didn't pray, "Take this cup away from me, get me out of this." He said, "Strengthen me." Because he could have retired back home and had a really good life.
Yeah, yeah, he could, so we get the wall happily up.
I think he stayed very focused on his position. In other words, he knew that everybody was looking at him as a leader and then watching what he does and how he handles situations. So, you know, I forget exactly, it's like when he was being tempted to go into the temple. You know, a person like me and my position, I can't do that.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. So, he stayed focused. Think back to his original... You know, his, the, chapter one, you know, his original calling, what were some of the, what was, what was his process in, in discerning this, his call? You know, this, this call to go back to Jerusalem? We'll put focus on obedient. So what else?
Fellowship of God, I mean, he was spending time, I mean, we're saying praying, but I guess that.
The word we used was patience, he was, he was patient. And I think he was patient in this situation because he didn't do anything rash, he didn't respond to the threat with, 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 you know, a, a counter threat. So he was patient and thoughtful.
Another one that jumped out at me was chapter seven, verse two. He says, "I put in charge of Jerusalem, my brother," and I can't pronounce these names, "and I, along with Hanaan, the commander of the citadel, because they were men of integrity and feared God more than most men do." So he selected leaders that had integrity and fear of God.
Surround them with good people.
And he was looking for those particular skill sets, not the art of deal.
Yeah, put pin in there, let's come back to that, that's a good one, but he surrounded himself with good people, with good leaders. What else?
Well, and he was careful because he made sure the gates were closed, open after daylight, closed before sunset, basically. So that there wasn't a chance for something.
To get those common sense.
And he either never told us about it, or he never was rattled, I mean, he was just steady, steady, steady. He may not have wanted to tell us about Nehemiah.
Yeah, I mean, think about it, he, you know, this is a ninety day process, because he spent a month praying about, no, I'm sorry, he spent four months.
Four months, yeah.
This is my mind, sorry, he spent four months praying for the, and preparing to even talk to the king about starting this project. And half that time he spent now on property, rebuilding the wall. So, you know, in that, in that four months, I think he built that, that preparation was, that steadfastness, that thoughtfulness, that patience. You know, kept him focused, you know, on being obedient.
Did he, did he ever tell these people that the king had actually sent him?
Yeah.
Did he, was he, I can't remember if he opened.
That was initial.
Told them that.
I think we, we assumed that when he entered, he had these, he took these letters.
And they saw.
That Artaxerxes had.
And the arrival of all the building supplies probably took him.
Right, and the people who were coming to help.
Yeah, so he, yeah, and again, that's part of the preparation and common sense that, hey, I've got my permits in order.
Now, I was thinking about that earlier, so when the king sent him or allowed him to go, he sent troops with him, right?
Yeah.
I never did hear anything else, reading about whatever happened to the troops, they just dropped him off and headed back. They didn't stick around for any action, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, my understanding was they were just to keep, get him there.
A convoy, yeah.
Get him there and get out of Dodge.
Yeah, that's okay.
Go on your own.
Good on you, yeah.
Good luck.
But the king didn't provide, you know, material support, right?
Yeah.
I mean, there was money and.
And the building supplies, yeah, absolutely. So, you know, and I, I think that, that part of that, that four month prayer time, you know, prepared him to face that opposition. So it wasn't something that he may have knew was coming, or, you know, had seen was coming, but he was prepared for it. And I got a, I got a feeling he knew that there was going to be some opposition. He's, he was in the royal court, he was involved in the, the politics of the kingdom, I mean, he, you know, he knew the score.
What, what was the timeframe from the time that he started the wall building?
Fifty-two days.
Fifty-two days?
They had good convenience.
Well, they got the wall up for fifty-two days.
And then they immediately just opened the door and fifty thousand people.
No.
So how long did it take to get the people's thing?
Um, let's talk about that, let's jump into chapter seven and dive into that. So chapter seven, I found, Who's Your Neighbor? So.
It's also Who's Your Mama?
Who's Your Mama, yeah. So Nehemiah got the wall up fifty-two days. What did he do next? There were kind of three things we, we see in the beginning of chapter seven that he did, we've kind of already alluded to, two of them.
He set up gatekeepers.
Yeah, I mean.
You got some entertainment.
You got to have some entertainment, you got to have, get on the wall, you got to have. So Rod had mission, he appointed leaders.
And notice he wasn't one of them.
Et cetera, that's a great point. Safety procedures for the wall, like Janet was talking about.
Create a register of people.
Took a census, yeah, so that's what, that's kind of where Steve was going with census. Let's talk about the safety procedures for just a second. He said that, you know, we're only going to open the, the gates when the sun is high. What, why? What, what do you think the rationale behind that was?
Everybody be awake.
Everybody be awake, good point.
Everybody's up.
Yeah, the, the study, my study Bible says that in common, in that time, the, at sunrise, the, the gates would come open because there's all these vendors that are going to come in and set up tent markets. And they want to be there as soon as they possibly can to start, you know, to have their, their wares ready to sell, you know, their produce fish, whatever they have.
Yeah.
So that when people start gathering, they're already there, he's going, no, we're not going to do that. What we're going to do is wait till the sun's really up high and everybody's awake and alert, then the merchants, the outsiders will come in.
Yeah, so we can kind of control.
Be on your guard.
Exactly, you know, and historically, you know, if you were going to be attacked, it would be in the night or during the early morning at sunrise. Again, when everybody's asleep. So, you know, there, there's that common sense, so it's, there's, there's an economic rationale, you know, there's, there's a defense rationale. So, you know, again, I think he's, he's just employing some, some good leadership, common sense, that we're, we're trying to build community, you know, now he's in community building mode. So what's, why, why? What's the deal with the census? What's, why did, uh, why did he need to have a, have an accounting of all these people?
He needs to get some people on living in there. You're really like, there's nobody living there, right? He's trying to build a plan to get folks to come back and build their houses and live.
Well, there are some.
But some were.
Some were.
But a lot were not, right? They moved all to other places, scattered. And he's trying to find out that sort of, how do we put it, though?
Somebody's family had.
People who's given dinners. Who, the ones that came from exile or been.
Right, exactly, of course.
Yeah, these were Jews.
Yeah.
And, and to be, to be a Jew, you have to, your genealogy has to go back to Abraham. You have to be able to trace your, that's why I said Who's Your Mama? Because if you can't trace your genealogy back to Abraham, you can't be a Jew. And so that's why this is important, because he's saying, these are, these are going to be bona fide Jews, they can live here, they're going to be citizens in good standing.
Yeah, because.
That is a dumb question, but how did you do that back then?
You don't.
I mean, how, how would you? Generations would that be?
Well, you can't, I mean, it was just, it was a.
Take the word for it.
Yeah. And, yeah. And there's a provision, apparently there's a provision around it too, because if you're not, say, oh, well, I lost my genealogical records, then you can convene a council of priests and they can say, okay, we believe you. So there's a way, there is a way around it, but I don't think.
They had a procedure to resolve it. But here's the, here's the point to that, is he's not only trying to rebuild a community, he's trying to rebuild a community of faith for worship. So, you know, that's where this, Who's, I've said it, Who's Your Mama, that's why that's important. Now, the timeframe, I don't have any idea how long, he, he, this is over, this starts to take over a couple of years, because he ultimately goes back to Babylon and then comes back in like four thirty-two-ish timeframe. But I don't, I don't know what that, I'll have to look that up. So he didn't just open the gates and these forty-two thousand people kind of came walking in with their.
Servants.
Yeah.
I think too, I mean, it's an intentional way to get them to connect with their identity again, too, right? Going through that process of having to take into account of their lineage.
Yeah.
It's a pretty small area for that many people, too.
Yeah.
Exactly where they were living.
Well, again, as Mark said, not everybody's going to be inside the city walls, you're going to have farmers around, but they'll come into the city if they're under attack.
So he's trying to build a community of faith, get people to reconnect with their faith. What else? Why else is it important for him to, to try to, to get more of these people to, to come back in and reclaim their homes inside the city and rebuild? There's some practical, going back to his practicality, there's practical reasons, again, building community. Yeah, they need, they need commerce. And then what else?
Strengthen numbers.
So, safety numbers. So the more places that are, the more neighborhoods that are populated, the more neighborhood watches that they can have on that part of the wall to, to keep them safe. So, so again, you know, there's, there's a lot of layers to what Nehemiah is trying to do. This is a, I pulled this out of a commentary that Matthew Henry, Matthew Henry's Bible commentary, which, you know, dates back to the seventeen fifties, but is still one of the, you know, most used commentaries, even though he was a little bit racist. We'll get into that tonight. But he, and again, this is kind of written in a, a little bit of that English vernacular. He thought fit to take into account of the people, that he might find what families had formerly had their settlement in Jerusalem, but were now removed into the country, that he might bring them back, and what families could in any other way be influenced by their religion or by their business to come and rebuild the house, the houses in Jerusalem and dwell in them. So little reason have we to wish that we may be placed alone in the earth or in Jerusalem itself, that much of our safety and comfort depends upon our neighbors and friends. The more, the stronger, the more, the merrier. So. What do you think about that? What do you think about Nehemiah? How does a cup bearer, who, who's, I mean, he's, he's involved in, he's involved in politics where he's from, you know, more from a security standpoint, he's, he's kind of part of the security detail. Where's he get this skill set? Because that, that intrigues me, I, I've always been intrigued by Nehemiah. You know, he's kind of like the, I'm trying to think some of the great engineers, Henry Ford of his time. You know, that had processes and innovation for getting things done.
So he was in the court and was the cup bearer, that he had to be a lot of meals, or a lot of the different people in the kingdom were there talking to the king about buildings, about people, about taxes, about this, about that. And so he, if he was just listened, he probably heard a lot that he could put all together and when the time came, he could use.
Yeah, absolutely buy that.
And see, he was at, to his point, he was at the center of, one of, the center of the court of one of the civilization's greatest empires ever, the Persian Empire. And so he, he was, you know, at the center of the universe at that point, really. So, and I think the word, I still stand by what I said a couple of weeks ago, I think it's not a simple cup bearer, I think he had a, had a role in that court that was much grace greater than just the cup bearer, he was a steward, he was in charge of the, the, you know, sections of the royal palace, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So I think he was pretty high up, yeah.
Cup bearers, not just a cup bearer, I mean, they.
That's what I think.
That's what I read, is there.
He probably was a guy tasting the food.
He was like an advisor.
He had, he had a team of people that probably tasted the food.
Yeah, I think he said he was like a, a base, not base, but a carson.
Carson.
You know, without Navy fans, he ran the palace.
They had forty, they counted all those numbers together, there were like forty thousand, forty-two thousand people, but there were seven thousand three hundred servants, which, that's, they had a lot of, you know, and they had.
Two hundred singers. You know, lots of good music going on.
That's where Nashville Music, I guess, that started from.
The Israeli Motown.
I guess that was, in the way I interpreted that, I mean, this is a question, I may be totally off base, but that was part, part of the worship.
Yes.
You know, but it's not really there for entertainment as much as it's the.
Choir.
Yeah, thank you.
So, sort of.
Yeah.
I, I think he was, I think Nehemiah was, aside from being able to see all these things going on, having, having a role in the empire, I think he had an extremely analytical mind. And I can just see all the pieces filtering down in his brain, just like a computer, and knowing full well what all he needed and knowing how to attack various problems, I don't think it would be difficult for him at all to come up with this recipe. Or any.
Yeah. So here's, here's, here's how, you know, I think we can translate Nehemiah's experience to, to our lives is, is, you know, that I think this tells us to pay attention to what's going on around us, because, you know, God has put us in a situation, quite possibly, to, to develop a skill set, to develop an understanding, to be, to develop networks, to develop relationships that he will use somehow, maybe even a hundred and eighty degrees differently than where you are now for his will down the road. And I, and I think that's kind of one of the big things I get out of studying Nehemiah is, and again, I think it goes all, it goes back to that, you know, he was prayerful and patient and was, was able to, to, to shut everything out, else out and, and hear God clearly in, in this calling. And, and, you know, I like what Chris says, these things probably started clicking into place as he was like, you know, he started addressing these problems, oh, you know, this is just like what I saw, you know, blah, 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 being, you know, or this is something like we had to address when we had, you know, they, they brought us the wrong order of lambs, and, you know, the king was wanting goats or whatever. So, you know, I, I think that's one of the, those major things we can pull from, from Nehemiah is, you'll pay attention, because God may have you in a weird place, or in a commonplace, or in a boring, dull place in your life to prepare you for something else.
It reminds, there's an old men's Bible study book, and if you guys have read it, it's called Halftime From Success to Significance. Y'all ever read that? It's a really good book, it's, and it's good for anybody, but it's, it's particularly a men's Bible study.
It sounds like it's got sports analogy.
It's halftime is what it is, and those of us that are of a certain age in here, you know, you hit midlife and you had success, you know, you made money, you've got children, you know, got a house, got all this stuff. and you've had success, you know, you've made money, you've got children, you know, got a house, got all this stuff. But the idea is, okay, you're, you're transitioning from success to significance. What are you gonna do with your life now? How, what's your legacy really gonna be? How are you gonna make an impact? What's your ministry really? Okay, and I think he had one of those moments. I think he said, okay, I've got a great gig here, you know, life is really good, uh, but the Jews need me and I can do this, I have the wherewithal to do this, and so I'm gonna go do this.
What was the name of that again, "Half Time"?
From Success to Significance.
Do you think he had a midlife crisis?
Well.
I think he had a midlife difficulty.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the, uh, the midlife crisis hotline is one eight hundred four seven.
What else, what else can we take from, um, this, these two chapters of Nehemiah or what we've taken to, to date that we haven't talked about?
If you look at, if I did a math, right, six oh five, where they left and went off and that's sixty-six years?
Sixty-six years to win.
Till they started coming back, but they were sixty-six years, they were living in a different place. Their whole life was messed up, their religion was messed up, their guidance and family was messed up. And if you look at two thousand eighteen and take sixty-six years away, it goes back to nineteen fifty-two. And what was life
Wow.
in this country, what was religion and family, education and things like in nineteen fifty-two? And if we tried, you know, to get, I think what he says is, he found broken lives. They, it came back, but they didn't have that nineteen fifty-two way of living. They had the two thousand eighteen, so he's trying to get them back to where.
They all had cell phones and a TV.
But yeah, that's a, that's a great correlation, because, you know, that, that's one of the major problems that we face in the church, is that we're, the main line of church is set up and equipped to serve a community that existed in the nineteen fifties. So, yeah, I'm not gonna jump on that soapbox, because I do that Monday through Friday, nine to midnight. So, next week, we're gonna dive into, uh, chapters eight and nine and spend some time, uh, and get to know Ezra. So, when you're, um, when you're, um, doing some research, um, let's, let's, let's dig into Ezra and see what we can find out about Ezra. The person, not the rock fan. What was Ezra? What was that thing?
I don't think it was Ezra, but.
Something, something Ezra, anyway. And then in chapter nine, you know, we, we, we start getting into, um, some worship, um, and some, introduced to some names and places. So, so check those out, see what we, you know, see what you can come up with. So, these are, and again, this is where we will meet Ezra and, and make that connection between Ezra and Nehemiah.
And we're going to confess their sins in this chapter nine, the people confess their sins.
Optional, it's very optional.
Only if you, we're, we have long enough time.
We're not, we're on time, one that won't.
Yeah. Let me stop the recording now.